All right, go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today is May the 12th, 2025, and this is our regular monthly board meeting. And so we are called to order. As always, we start our meeting out with prayer and a pledge. And tonight, we're going to have Commissioner Green to lead us in our prayer, and Commissioner Ellis will lead us in the pledge. Will Rice, please.
Our Fathers, we come to you this evening. We come thankful for the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We thank you most of all for forgiveness of sin, for your son that died on the cross, that we might be saved and have eternal life. Father, we pray that you would give us wisdom, patience, and grace this evening as we try to make decisions that are going to affect McDowell County citizens. And Father, we pray that you just give us the wisdom that we need to do that, to benefit all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You both had a chance to look at the minutes. What's the close of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I can motion we approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion. Are we going to... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? We approve the agenda.
So may.
Mr. Chairman, if the board would allow, I'd like to move the item B under Old Business, Animal Shelter Planning Update, as well as the item A under New Business, Animal Control Update, right behind Dr. Gritt, under Appointments, since there is great interest in those. And maybe flipping them to have maybe the ordinance part go first and then talk about the shelter.
What's the board?
I amend my motion to reflect the recommendation by the county manager.
Second that. Any other discussion?
And one other. I do not need a closed session tonight, so we can take that off. That's okay.
Take that off. All right. Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. First, on our appointments tonight, we have, under item A, we have a school property update. And we have Honorable Dr. Tracy Gritt here to share that with us. So the floor is yours, sir.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chairman Green, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. Got several things to talk with you about tonight. I'm excited about tonight. We've got something we've been working on for several years, to be honest with you, and work, to be honest with you, that started long before me. So tonight, I want to talk, first of all, about how thankful we are for our support from the commissioners. You guys have been incredible to our students and our families, and we greatly appreciate that. You know, a good county has to have good working relationships. And we're very blessed in McDowell County. You can go across the state and not see some of the things that you see here with our partnerships. And for that, I just want to commend you guys. And thank you. From a superintendent's standpoint, I can certainly say that. But tonight, I can honestly say that on behalf of our board as well. So we greatly appreciate the partnership that you guys bring to the table. We've got, like I said, take you back a couple of years. Two years ago, McDowell County Schools did a series of studies. We had, the first was a facility study by Dr. Jim Watson to identify the needs in our district. The second was an NC State study, was based on student population density and specifically requested support for navigating where a new school should be developed. The first one, Dr. Watson's recommended that the district consider a consolidation of schools and reduce the footprint of the district, specifically noting the changing landscape in McDowell County with school-aged youth. So that was the first one that we got, and it was primarily facilities. Again, the second one was NC State, and we looked at density and population. Now, we have had a declining enrollment. You'll note that a number of rural counties have had a declining enrollment in student population. And that's something that's not just McDowell County. That's across the state. But with that said, you know, what you want to do is really start thinking about your future and what that looks like. Well, the NC State study group recommended the possibility of a consolidation of schools. And what they recommended was looking specifically at the Marion area, very specifically. And they used, they pinpointed an area right around East McDowell Middle School and said, you need to be roughly within a mile and a half radius of where East McDowell Middle School is to plan for a future building site. Well, folks, as you know, that's not real easy. There's not a whole lot of land in McDowell County available, let alone in the Marion proper. So tonight, what I've got for you is, you'll notice that I've got two pieces, or two properties that are listed for you, and I'll go through those here in just a few minutes. But I want to talk to you a little bit about what this would look like and why we're doing this. The recommendation locating that property roughly a mile and a half from east is very important. And as you know, folks, the state will award grants up to $42 million for an elementary school, $52 million for a middle school, or $62 million for a high school. And those are capital grants to build a new school. The stipulations for that are this. Tier one counties, which we are, combining two schools, which we are considering. We have not made that piece public yet. We're going to be talking about that at our board meeting tonight, and being shovel-ready. In order to be shovel-ready, you have to have some land kind of on lock and ready to go. So I want to bring that to you, as well as Hurricane Helene. I see Mr. Keller in here, who's very familiar with that. He'll be giving you an update. It's another reason why I feel like this is a great year for us to have them look at us. We've got a lot going on in McDowell County with, and not only McDowell County, but western North Carolina when it comes to having the spotlight on us. So it's a good year to go to the state and ask our legislators, hey, is this the year that you guys will look at McDowell County for a new school? So I say all that to say, the bottom line is, we believe we're positioned to seek funding, but I cannot say when we will receive it. The last time, this took several years. Tonight, I will present two parcels of land. The first one is the Gurley property, which is East Court and Ridge Road. This is located on Highway 70. And I put together a property information, I don't know, pictures and all the good stuff. It's got all the good qualities that you want to see. But this is a property that we have entered into a contract, and we're in the 120-day due diligence period, where we're going to be doing Phase One and looking at the property to see if it is a possible location. We've also entered into Phase One on a Jacktown Road property, which is the Kiln Dry property. That is also there. So within a mile and a half radius of East McDowell Middle School, we were able to find two pieces of property. We're under due diligence on both of those pieces of property. Now, I need to be clear. We're not buying two pieces of property at the end of this. We're going to let the board evaluate the property. We're going to let the experts tell us which property would be best situated for a school, and then go from there. I'll also tell you that the amounts of these property, the Gurley property, was $1.7 million, and the Dry Kiln property was listed at $1.5 million. Now, that said, the 120-day period, if there's anything that's found on the site or anything that would reduce that amount, we could potentially go back to the seller and say, hey, we're going to incur additional costs. We'd ask you to reduce that price. And, but as far as them going up, they cannot. And I think that's the issue. It's a little bit different from the school system. It's kind of in reverse. You know, often, you don't necessarily ask your superintendent to go out and purchase property. We're not purchasing it. We're going out and entering into contracts. So the next piece of that is, why am I here? I think that's really, really important. The Board of Education has agreed on these two pieces of property. They had to evaluate the property contracts. And what we'll need to do is request, according to general statute, that the county commissioners approve the purchase price and the location. So with that said, again, we're not trying to purchase both pieces, but we need to be ready to purchase those at the end of the 120 days. So tonight, I'm going to be requesting that you guys approve, and I'll certainly answer any questions, approve those notions as that. One would be on the East Court property, and the value of that one on the Gurley property would be 1.7. So location and dollar amount. And the Jacktown or Dry Kiln property was 1.5. Again, location and amount. And I've actually pretty much covered everything. If anybody had any questions specifically about any of the properties or the process, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Dr. Gritt, it's my understanding that the purchase of this property is going to be covered by sales tax funds that's in reserve for that purpose.
Yes, sir. Those are capital funds that are part of the school system's capital. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that the commissioners approve, for the McDowell County Board of Education, the purchase of the property at 65 Jacktown Road, and that cost being 1.5 million. Okay, good motion. You have a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd also like to make the motion that we approve the McDowell County Board of Education to purchase the property at East Court and US 70 and Ridge Road, and the cost of that being 1.7 million. Second that. Motion, you have a second.
Yes.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Folks, we greatly appreciate you. This is a big deal for the county. A big deal for the school system to be able to take a step forward. And we cannot do this without you guys looking after our kids. We greatly appreciate you.
Dr. Gritt, I think, and I think we have proven it in the past with you guys, that we are strong advocates for the school system and for education with our young people. And we will certainly do whatever is within our powers to help you guys out.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add that we, as one commissioner, I know all five of us will do it. Whenever you need letters of support, resolutions, going to our House and Senate member, let us know. We'll be glad to definitely speak on behalf of the new school. And we really hope you get that. And now's a great time to move forward, and we're excited about opportunities. We're behind you 100%.
Absolutely. And as we reduce our footprint, that'll open up some things for you guys as well. Definitely be able to talk to you about what that is. I think that just shows how the county and the Board of Education work together. I can't thank you enough. I greatly appreciate you.
We appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we're going to be bringing item A under New Business, which is Animal Control Ordinance. And so, Mr. Wood, would you lead us off on that one?
Yes, sir. If it's, what I'll do is maybe hit both items, and then you can have discussion after both. Say, on the Animal Control Ordinance, just as a reminder for the board, I believe the first time that was talked about in the fall predates Ms. Garner's time on the board. So the rest of you may remember that you authorized the planning board to examine the current Animal Control Ordinance for modification based on concerns that had been expressed to you and some you had yourselves about dogs roaming at large causing injury to livestock, to people, to property, those sorts of things. And so, how you're, just as a reminder and also letting folks in the room know, you will sometimes charge the planning board with a task with looking at an ordinance. And so that information and charge is presented to them. And the purpose then is for that planning board to meet with our staff, with the county attorney, do their investigations on the topic at hand, whether it's something like this or a property development regulation or whatever. And then over, after time, you know, bring back a recommended ordinance back to you. So again, that was last fall. There was a check-in, I believe, back in December on a different related item to that. But they've been working on it since the fall with some participation input from our staff here and there as they've been working on it. And so, at their last meeting, which was the last Monday, and in April, they did agree upon a draft ordinance, which I have shared with you and has been shared. And they do address the concern that you expressed about keeping animals on property. And so, the term leash law is not used. That could be a misnomer for folks. But it does, would require a pet owner to keep, especially dogs, but keep the animal on property so they're not causing concern in the greater neighborhood. And so that was addressed. There are a few other items that, some based on input from Ms. Guzman. But other than, that's the main focus in responding to that. There was another section presented in there that, you did not ask the planning board to look into holding periods for shelter animals, but it was included in there. And when I asked our staff liaison, you know, where did this come from? What was the discussion, the journey, or whatever? There was concern about, since we operate a managed intake shelter, there are many times that our shelter is full with cats and dogs. And our staff does a wonderful job. They are reaching out to many of the rescues present in this room. They're working with rescues out of the area and sometimes out of state. We have been participating with out-of-state transports for many years. And we're grateful for any organization we could work with here locally or in the region or even elsewhere in the country that can help with our pet overpopulation. And so that concern that came up in that planning board venue was, you know, sometimes folks want to surrender an animal or if Animal Control needs to remove an animal from the community, making sure there's space. So that was where that came from as far as a maximum holding period with language about extenuating circumstances. And so that, again, was included in that draft you received.
Mr. Wood, indeed, sir. After looking at the ordinance, it covers a whole lot more than just our cats and dogs. I mean, it covers, our ordinance covers birds, horses, goats, chickens, whatever, even exotic animals. But I think our folks at our shelter have done a wonderful job in trying to get these animals adopted out. Matter of fact, the last one that I got in March came from the shelter and was chipped and everything from me right there. And it's, has been a wonderful pet. But I would like to make the motion that we, the ordinance that was proposed includes language about pet owners keeping that animal on their property under their control, whether it be through commands or whatever, if the dog is so trained or by a leash, however. And I think that's a good thing. It puts responsibility on the pet owner. But I would like to accept the proposal with the exception of the 14-day euthanization period.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
So I'm clear that one clause in the draft you would have removed, but keep the other parts intact?
Yes. Okay, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's taken care of. We, I don't think any of us want to see animals destroyed. That's not what our intent was. And we certainly did not push that and ask for that. It was just something that was brought to us. So we certainly, all of us care about animals. All of us care about animals. Okay. Next item would be...
Let me touch on the shelter part. So for, again, for board and for those in the room, we have been providing updates on where we stand with the new shelter for probably about a year and a half or so. Someone on the board was asking me before a little bit of the history of the shelter and then concerns that have been raised about the condition of it, the size of it, and what we've been doing in response to that. So just very quickly, the current building was built around 1980. It is the same size footprint it was at that time as it was built new. And again, the staff do a tremendous job with the facility they have. About three or so years ago, prior board, many of you, several of you were on that board, authorized an evaluation of improvements to it. So we looked at how to expand off to the sides, to the rear at that time. We actually had some basic architectural drawings done. The board at that time talked about it and said, you know, this is going to be an investment. It's going to cause, you know, maybe some extended lives to that shelter, but maybe not the best use of dollars to just extend the life of that building for a little bit longer, for a little bit of benefit with the cost that would go into it. So that board authorized looking at alternative locations and talked a little bit about raising additional funds for that construction. So fast forward a little bit. You identified a site located on 226 South that the county owns. After a lot of evaluation of that, actually had an architect do a floor plan schematic or whatever for it. It worked as far as the space, but the site was unsuitable due to environmental conditions. So as we're evaluating that site, in the meantime, prior board had authorized some set aside of funds. One source was the sale of the small animal processing facility that the county used to own on, near the Ag Barn. And then we had some federal Rescue Plan Act funds that were also set aside. So with that and interest and everything, we have about $1 million that this board and prior have set aside for that project. So once the site on 226 South was deemed suitable, your charge was to find other county-owned property that could be used. And so we have been looking into that. We've got a few potential sites right now. We're trying to narrow down. And so we're not ready to really zero in on that yet, but we're getting very close. And once that's identified, we'd like to come back and then talk about, you know, formal fundraising campaigns and then whatever next steps that would be. We just don't want to get the cart before the horse about raising funds and getting folks excited about renders and things and not really having the site nailed down to the final recommended site.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion. Go ahead and allow staff to continue with site selection. And at our next monthly meeting, bring back the recommendation on a potential site for a new animal control building.
Second that. If that is possible within the next month.
I think so, sir.
All right, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One other item too, Mr. Chairman. I know that the board directed staff to proceed forward with a committee that would work on fundraising for a new potential site, shelter. And so I know that staff's been very busy, but we'd like to see staff by next meeting bring back a proposal of people to be on that committee just so that way the committee's in place, ready to go once the board makes future decisions. And I put that form of motion.
Okay, we have a motion. You have a second on that.
I second that. I think there's a lot of people here in House tonight.
I've already, I can already see some faces in here that I think would be interested in being on that committee. So we've got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, one other round too, though, while we're talking about it before we move off of it. I know that pet adoptions, and I was talking to Ms. Garner too about it. We've sort of gotten, last week, how many were adopted out, Mr. Wood, roughly, from our shelter?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. Ms. Guzman might know in the past.
While she's looking, while she's looking that up, I would just like to ask the question here tonight for my own interest. How many people in here tonight has ever adopted an animal? Please, you know. Fantastic. Good. Thank you very much. So that...
Well, while they're trying to determine that number, I'll say this, I think we need to have a major focus on our website, our social media. I know the staff stays busy. I did ride with them Friday. Just, I said, I want to see what a life, just a couple hours in your day's like. And they were just ping, 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 call, 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 and just moving. And I do want to hope that we can, I think it's major to increase that social media presence. And I don't know what that looks like, Mr. Wood. Maybe you can give the board some direction. But really focus on trying to adopt and with our external groups that do, as Chairman said, does such an excellent job in helping partner with our animal patrol staff to try to just take that to the next level. Because if we're removing the number of days, we need to really hit that adoption rate hard. And we need to really focus on getting that out community, such as you saw, as Chairman asked, all the hands that went up, who people was adopting. I think everybody had a red shirt on here, has adopted, and looked like the whole room, as a matter of fact. So I think that we really need to get outside the room and outside of the group and really get that, bring in new people to adopt and help us out with that.
One other thing also, Mr. Wood, you made me some staff. Or some of the staff could answer this. Is there anyone that goes into our school system and talks to children and make, you know...
Two things, if, two things that Ms. Guzman and I have talked about in the, especially in the past week or so, is highlighting the things they've been doing, but areas that we can work with community partners on building. One is education. And I did speak with Dr. Gritt about that recently, about there have been folks in the community that have talked about wanting to help, and some have helped and done that in the past. Especially before COVID, there was some good efforts there. But however, we and our staff can work with interested groups, and have to be vetted and all those sorts of things going into schools. But he is entirely open to talking about what is, based on curriculum, character ed building, those sorts of things. Fourth graders tend to be about where that focus tends to be. They're very impressionable. A lot of times, they go back home and, you know, harangue their parents about what's right, if we remember that. So we have spoken about that. And so that's a homework-type item. The other one is spay and neuter. That's, and you've talked about that a lot in this room in the past. And you've provided funding for that through partnership with folks like Mr. Shroud and others. And if I may, just to kind of stay on the topic, I know it's of great interest to the folks in the room. We have operated with the partnership of the state of North Carolina and the Department of Agriculture, the spay-neuter voucher program through DSS for probably, gosh, maybe about 18 years or so. That's one of those programs where we had very little knowledge about, and a local advocate said, hey, are you aware of this program? I was here that time. And we said, no, we're not. And so, again, thanks to outreach from folks in the community, they made us aware. And at that time, we started working with the department. We have one, currently, one veterinary clinic in the county that is participating in the program. The other one made a choice to back out of it. And so we did find out in the last week, another local clinic has now started treating small animals in clinic in foothills in Dyersville. And so they agreed they would like to participate in the program as well. And so that's a big lift. So we're doing the signup process without adjournment now so he can get on board with that. And we'll make sure our literature at DSS is updated. So folks, again, we give them a choice. Wherever you would like to go, you have to make the appointment, all that sort of thing. But it provides a no-cost spay-neuter for folks to income qualify. So there's other things to do. I've spoken with Ms. Arledge. She's probably in the room. There she is. Had a really good conversation with her too, actually, last week about how she and other organizations, but I'll give her the credit, is trying to get other resources into the county. Without getting the specifics, let her do that. That's a big effort to try to get more spay-neuter options. to get more spay and neuter options for our folks here. And she and I talked about our voucher program with DSS. So there's more work to do on that, but...
How much do we spend through DSS on that voucher program?
Typically, it is 100% state. Every once in a while, it can have some local funds in it, but it's almost always state at the numbers.
What local funds do we put towards spay and neuter?
You have, in the past two years, you have set aside roughly in the $20,000 range, which we went through that. So we don't currently have any local funds identified for spay and neuter vouchers.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, if the board would entertain it, or you would entertain it, that we have staff examine sales tax and see if there's room to take $25,000 out of sales tax to go towards spay and neuter for our county residents.
Both a motion?
That's a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do you have a second? There is currently nothing set aside for the spay and neuter program here in the county.
Not of purely county funds. The funds that are...
We are in the process of looking at our budget for next year, so we can include that in looking at the budget to see what we can do.
I could do that, if that was...
And that number of adoptions so far this year is 146. Whoever asked that question?
I would certainly be for investing money in that spay and neuter program. I think probably as far as clarity to the board right now, maybe it might be a good idea to talk about this some more and to work.
It's part of the budget process, yes, sir.
You speak with Allison and see what, see what we can do on the, on the budget-wise this year. And evidently, everybody's not fixed on taking this out of the sales tax right now. So we'll just readdress this issue.
Yep. We can do that, yes, sir.
One other item I'll be doing on. I know we have Ms. Silver's in the crowd, and you were talking about education. And I think it was fourth graders countywide, and you guys on the school board probably remember this, they had the educational program and course where they went through. I think that'd be great to talk to, like you said, Dr. Grit and the school board, see if we can get that reinstated.
Part of that was, you're talking about spay and neutering. Each of the elementary schools did an essay contest at the end, and the kids were able to tell what they had learned. And I brought the booklet President Penner wrote that during her time that she was dealing with her cancer. And each kid, each school had a winner of the essay contest, and they were awarded a free spay or neuter for their pet through those veterinary programs. And there were several retired teachers that went and worked on it. It's an excellent program.
I would certainly be for an investment in the spay and neuter program. I just, I don't know exactly where we need to take those funds from or find those funds at currently.
Instead of the, we need a well-funded spay and neuter with access to a lot of people that are below poverty level in this county. We need enforcement on spay and neuter because you can adopt all day long, but until you stop all the puppies and cats and kittens that are born without access to spay and neuter, you're still going to have the same problem.
Yes, ma'am, we agree. Is that everything you had, Mr. Wood, on that?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. All right, moving along then to item B on our appointments, which would be the transit system recognition. We have Mr. Jason Hallfield here for that. Jason, podium yours, please. Good evening.
Thank you for having us. Just in the way of a super quick update, I want to update the board on the express service, which started May the 1st. We've had up through Saturday, 200 rides on that. So I'm very proud of that. It's working. There's been a lot of positive feedback. So we're, we're very proud of how that's working out. It's a good thing, good for the county. And we're looking forward to see how that all works out. So thank you for your support there. I'd like to just take a moment to recognize something that I think is very significant. The North Carolina Public Transportation Association is a agency in the state that exists to advance public transportation issues, public transportation matters. And at the recent annual convention in Cherokee, they chose to give McDowell Transit the Transit Agency of the Year. I'm very proud of that. But you know, this has nothing to do with me. This has something and everything to do with a great group of people who are in there 5:30 every morning, rain or shine, moving people safely around our county. Thirty-four thousand trips in a year, 300,000 miles driven, no accidents, no incidents. We've got an absolutely awesome group of transit drivers and transit support staff in the office. You know, it's a, it's not an easy job. It's not just about driving around. There's so many facets to this. It's a very difficult job that you can really only understand if you have been there. So they play a tremendous part in the well-being of our citizens daily. They really stepped up to the plate during Helene and did above and beyond to do a lot of incredible things. So I'm proud of them every day. I try to tell them that as often as I think about it. But you know, this is gratifying to see someone else step up and say what an awesome group of people we have at our transit agency.
Jason, with your recent endeavor with the express transit, right off the top of your head, do you know how many passengers you've hauled so far?
With the express?
Yes.
Over 200.
Over 200.
Yes. And that's just in a few days. That only started on May the 1st. It's working.
I just didn't hear that.
In fact, a couple of the drivers are out now. They'll be running till 8 o'clock tonight and on Saturday. So it's, it's working. It's, we're very pleased with it.
So it's a great addition that you add to the transit system. And it's very affordable.
Yes.
That's $5 round trip.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. You've got a plaque?
Yes.
Like the picture?
Yes, we'd like to, we'd like to ask the board to step forward and get a picture Okay, moving along. Next on the agenda tonight is item C under appointments, which will be the Helena recovery update. We have Mr. William Keller here. William, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the monthly Hurricane Helene recovery update. The EOC team continues to work each day. Today is day 230 that the emergency operations center has been activated for Hurricane Helene, and we remain in recovery operations. The slide in front of you shows the continued sections that are activated at the EOC, including our operations section focusing on debris removal, our human services section focused on critical needs of our citizens, our situation unit, our finance section, and our public information desk, all working daily to continue recovery operations. Our current roadmap, and as I've explained since the start of, even before Helene, as we were preparing, then into response, and now into recovery, managing a disaster is literally designing and following a roadmap specific to the hazard that is in play. Here's our current three action items that we're working on, debris removal, housing, and hazard mitigation. Those are the three major components of the recovery process at this time. Starting out with housing, when I was here last, there were five families in transitional shelter assistance by, through FEMA, that is, through hotel vouchers. Currently, there are zero. Volunteer organizations assisting in disasters for the folks in the audience that may have not have joined us before. VOAD is comprised of multiple nonprofit organizations in this community and really from the region and across the state that have come to McDowell County to focus on our housing, emergency housing needs, and to help citizens recover. The VOAD is led by Jerry Lewis and Victoria Gurek from Grace Community Church. And they have been strong EOC partners for many years. I put a comparison when I was here last. At the April meeting, we had 489 families that had requested emergency housing repairs. There were 349 completed last month, 64 pending, and then 76 families we were unable to contact at that time. We've made significant progress in the last 30 days. We've had 12 new applications. We've completed 70 projects, added one additional to the pending. And then we reduced the unable-to-contact list by 59 families, which is a substantial amount, and credit to our EOC staff and our VOAD led by Jerry and Victoria. I've got a couple of slides just of these volunteer organizations out in the community. We've got over 30 different agencies that coordinate with the emergency operations center and our VOAD group. They meet every other week at the EOC to coordinate who is assigned to each project, provide updates, and this is where families are adopted, where their housing project is adopted and is followed closely. As I said, we've got our repairs ongoing at 64 different locations. And I would remind everyone, these are organizations, many of which are volunteering their time, people coming from all over the U.S., as well as our employees and community members that are stepping up and volunteering at the various locations. The Marion Rotary Club has been a substantial partner to the EOC, providing monetary support as well as labor to complete some of these projects and coordinate the response from the volunteer side. On the debris removal front, our right-of-way debris removal along state and private roads has ended. Anyone who has right-of-way debris still present should be applying under the personal property debris removal program, also known as PPDR. That program, application's closed this Thursday at 7:00, and I'll talk more about that in just a minute. Waterway debris removal remains extremely active. I'll speak more to it in just a second. And then our PPDR program. When we talk about right-of-way debris removal, there was a total of 1,079,380 QB cards of debris was removed from McDowell County roadways. On the waterway debris front, last week, our EOC staff submitted 100 additional waterway points to the Army Corps of Engineers for assessment and approval for debris removal. And since the last update, we did have a temporary pause requiring the contractors to remove equipment from the waterway due to concerns raised by environmental groups. That has since been resolved, and the equipment is now rolling once again removing debris. I would point out that the importance of removing waterway debris was really highlighted in some of the wildfires in the western part of the state, to where the debris that was in the waterway allowed fires to cross the creeks and streams, which rivers and creeks are normally natural fire breaks. When you have a substantial amount of debris that is laying across a river or a creek, that takes away that natural barrier and allows a wildfire to cross it and continue on. Personal property debris removal, for anyone in the room that has not heard of this program before, if you have storm debris that is still down on your property, your friends, your family, your church, your small business, time is running out. We were granted a four-day extension. We worked for weeks to try to get an extension because there was people who had still not heard of the program showing up at our office. It will close this Thursday at 7:00, and it will not reopen again. FEMA and USAS, the Army Corps has been very clear. So folks have to come in to Emergency Services Headquarters, 129 Barnes Road in Marion, tonight until 7:00. And it will close Thursday, this Thursday, at 7:00 p.m. So far, we've got 1,265 applications submitted. The contract has been awarded to JBW. That is a debris contractor. The U.S. Army Corps is in charge of that and awarded the contract. Many of the residents probably received a mass call that we put out on Saturday morning, notifying residents of the debris extension or the application extension. And that phone call hit over 20,000 phones in McDowell County. Here is a summary of total debris removed. Just to give you an idea on the waterway front, sites identified currently and approved, we've got 723 waterway sites approved for debris removal. So far, they have cleared 308. There's still a substantial amount of debris that's got to be removed across the county, and the operations are ongoing today. Private roads and bridges update. North Carolina Emergency Management still has application period open for residents who have damaged private roads, bridges, or culverts. They can apply at this address or website that is listed here. They can also, residents can also go to McDowellgov.com. Under the Helene link, there's a very easy button to push and will take you straight to the application page for North Carolina Emergency Management.
William, quick question. People who had applied when this, after the hurricane came, who may not know about this, I'm sure you guys probably reached out to them letting know there's more money available now to help with these private bridges.
Yes, sir. And thanks for that question. We've got an internals data or damage assessment list. Our plan is, once the state is able to extrapolate the McDowell data from all of the entries and send that back to us, back to us, we're going to cross-reference it with our data and then send teams out to notify the residents who have not registered with the state to make sure we don't leave anyone behind. And folks who have applied and approved under this program, the timeline to finish all work is September of 2026 for all of the private roads and bridges. And that timeline was released this past week. That's a long time if you still have a bridge that you can't cross and you're crossing a creek, again, having wet feet. I mean, this is, this is just taking too long to get the private road and bridge program off of the ground. I want to be very clear, the locals, we continue to push for this to move faster, but this is a state and federal program. On the hazard mitigation front, we've got 35 families that have voluntarily applied for their property to be acquired through the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Program. That's an increase of one since I was last here. We're managing 21 elevation applications for local governments, 17 generator projects, 12 landslide applications. And our team is currently in the design phase for wildfire mitigation. Our priorities over the next 30 days is continuing to address the critical needs of our citizens, as we still have a number of families that are struggling, trying to fully recover from this storm. Debris operations, waterway, and PPDR cleanup will continue. I expect those are going to be ongoing for months. Housing repairs, we want to see 100% of our projects completed. Hazard mitigation, as I've told the board before, we're looking at 12, 24, potentially 36 months before this section of the disaster will be closed out and finalized. And then continuing, the EOC team will continue to implement the long-term recovery strategies for this county. Final slide I have is, a lot of people, I'm sure, are nervous as Hurricane season 2025 is 19 days away. As we normally do, we'll be conducting our annual hurricane flash flood exercise on May 28th with all of our EOC partner and agencies. This is an annual exercise that has proved extremely valuable and paid off through the years, including last year prior to Helene. As I've told our staff, while we are in response and recovery mode for Helene, it doesn't take away our responsibility to continue building capacity... take away our responsibility to continue building capacity, improving relationships, and building new relationships within the community, because the whole of community approach is what worked in Helene and has to be our focus in strengthening that moving forward. And as always, we continue to assist citizens. We have the 24-hour-a-day Hurricane Helene hotline. That number is up there. And as I've said many times, with continued kindness, compassion, and cooperation, we'll continue to get through this storm and recovery process together as one team with one mission. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Keller, I don't have a question, but I do want to thank you for, you worked several weeks on trying to get the debris removed from our McDowell County campground. There was a lot of downed trees and stuff that was above the fishing pier and around the trails, and it was just hard to figure out how we were actually going to get that moved at no cost to the taxpayer, but you finally did, so we appreciate that so much.
Yes, sir.
As always, thank you, Mr. Keller. Okay, next is item D on the agenda, which is the 2027 reappraisal update. Ms. Tammy Wiley is here for that, I think.
Good evening. I want to thank each of you for the opportunity to present an update on the county's 2027 revaluation. The revaluation team has already started visiting properties within the county to take exterior photos and measurements of any buildings that may be located there. This data that they're collecting is a crucial step in determining the fair market value of each property and to ensure the accuracy of our property tax records for every parcel in the county. All members of the revaluation team will carry photo IDs, and their vehicles will display McDowell County revaluation signs. The county has contracted with Pearson's Appraisal to conduct the revaluation, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Fred Pearson and Jeff Hayden, who will provide some further details for that.
My name is Fred Pearson with Pearson's Appraisal. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to work in McDowell County. Yes, we're out in the field. All our appraisals have been recognized and approved by Department of Revenue. As Tammy says, we all have IDs. We have signs on the cars. We've been listed with their tax office and also with the sheriff's office. We've visited each piece, each property, each approved properties. We're leaving door hangers when people are not there on the owner notification cards. We're taking pictures of the house, outbuildings, mobile homes, anything that may add value to the property. Our production goal is about 2,000 parcels a month. We should finish in August of 2026. Alyssa, we have done two counties in your vicinity. We did, we assisted Burke County in their 2023 reevaluation, and we assisted Yancey County in their 2024 reevaluation. When we're on site, we do not go into any houses. We don't go do any interior inspections. If a property owner asks us to do an interior inspection, we'd have to get someone from the county to go with us to go in a house. But we try to be nice and polite. If a property owner asks us to leave, we leave. That's pretty much it. We're pretty much on goal. We've done 2,300 parcels in about the last four weeks working here, and everything is moving along. We appreciate any input from the board. We appreciate any input from taxpayers in McDowell County. We all want to work together as a team to get this project done, and our overall goal is make sure everybody has a fair and applicable assessment.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Glad to answer your questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Just one comment. I was eating after day for lunch and saw a sign on a truck that said, "Reval Team", reevaluation team, so.
It should be McDowell Reevaluation.
This one said, "Reevaluation".
I saw, I did saw the McDowell on there, too.
It was a different angle, maybe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving to old business tonight. First, under old business, item A would be the water system project. Mr. Wood, would you leave us off?
Yes, sir. Just quickly on our water system growth, focus on the Nevo area first. We are about to start June 1st or 2nd on what we call our East End Project. This is around the end of our project limit, say, we're on NC 126, near the state park and the Marion Lake Club, that area. Very complex project. We've had our pre-construction meeting with Hyatt Pipeline, the contractor. They are going to be having, with county staff and engineer, a community meeting just with the folks that might be affected with it, so they know as work is starting, what to expect, that kind of thing. But again, we are running lines more or less down the middle of roads sometimes because the road width is so narrow and there's no shoulder, so it will be disruptive. This is a project where folks came to us. We were fortunate that grant funds were available at the time. We're able to help out, so we feel like there will be cooperation, but it will be complex, and so we anticipate a lot of coordination with the folks there with all the different partners. Phase 2A and 2B are wrapping up, maybe about two-thirds of the way done. I signed a certification on one section on Friday, and this is 2A and B. Few roads people might know, Roland's Chapel, Old Number 10 Memorial Park Road, Upton's Landing, few roads in that section. When that project is complete, we will tie, I guess at that part, it is Memorial Park Road, right at where the old attic was, so we're tying a line in there. So the good news is, we will come almost back to city limits there. We are placing a master meter in that vicinity, which will assist us in having two-directional, bidirectional flow of water. And so if we ever have a break on US 70, right now, we're up the creek. And so having a second line serving our system there on Memorial Park Road would be very beneficial to our system and to our customers. We have a small area called Phase 3. We're waiting on NCDOT and NCDQ. Lots of state agency approvals that are required. And then another small project near Exit 90 on Burma Road East and Boyd Road there that are also waiting on approval. Shifting west to the Providence area, West Marion Elementary area. I mentioned a few months ago, we had a project engineer change, and that has slowed us down a little bit. I think I also mentioned last month that we have to have a booster station on this section, and that, we knew we had a master meter, we had to divide from where we interact with the city system. The booster station was new, and so we'll have to find an area essentially between the school and the pilot truck stop for a booster station. And essentially, what that does is it boosts the water through the lines and makes sure you have adequate fire flow and pressure in your system. So we're finalizing that. The design of the lines themselves are more or less complete. It's just making sure we have all the boxes checked there. So any questions about our water systems?
Do you have any idea when construction might start on the West Marion?
I hope by the end of this calendar year. That's what we've kind of been holding out hope for, because again, this is a partnership with the school system. They are contributing some funding on it, and so I don't think it'll be in time for the school year to start in August, but maybe by the end of the school year. And just as a reminder of that partnership, again, funding is coming from the school system to help with that, but as part of the project, we will tie in the school to the system, so they don't have to do that separately.
Yeah. Okay, thanks for that update. Next would be under old business, item C, the universal grading Phase 2 project. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. Phase 1 was a project we accomplished several years ago. We're on county-owned property near the old Universal Furniture building near the college campus. We were able to rough grade a site thanks to Golden Leaf Foundation grant funds. So that site was rough graded. Private entity bought that land from the county, did a fine grade on it, and then has built a shell building on it. We would hope the same would happen with a new site that is adjacent to where the Phase 1 site was. Again, we have Golden Leaf Foundation funds that will grade a second site of approximately 10 acres. It'll be rough graded, which essentially just means we're trying to get a rough topographic level to where a contractor would come in later on and do a fine grading and start a foundation and things. So we had a pre-construction on that at the end of last week. Mr. Riddle was present with our engineer and the contractor that you've approved, and they are hoping to start June 2nd. And so that'll take several months. We will have somebody out there essentially every day they're working to make sure they get it to the right level. But after that's done, we'll mark it as a available building site for industry. Any questions?
Question? Okay, thank you. What about the transfer station improvements? Can you give us update on that?
Absolutely. So another large project we have been working on for several years involves improvements to our transfer station. Again, this is, sometimes when I say transfer station, I mean the 100-acre site where the old landfill was, but specifically here, I mean the actual structure that is where waste is received, loaded on the trailers, and then hauled off. So that facility itself was built in the mid-'90s. It has a lot of wear and tear on it, as you can imagine, with wheel loaders pushing waste pretty much six days a week, nonstop. And so, again, much like the animal shelter, we didn't get into that so much before about that being state inspected and permitted. This is much in the same way, different agency, but the state inspects and permits our transfer station facility, and they told us about 18 months ago, we must improve this transfer station. If we did not at some point, they could pull the permit. I would hate to imagine what that would mean for waste handling in our county. So we have been working since that time with our engineer to design improvements. That work will start hopefully in about a week on some preliminary work. And as I've talked before, that will be disruptive as well. We are not able to improve the existing facility while it's in operation. You can't have that with waste moving across, obviously, when you're trying to repair it. So the contractor will build a secondary floor, tipping floor. It will be open to the elements, which is not ideal on days like this, but we'll do the best we can as quickly as we can. So once that floor is poured, it will accept trailer waste. We will then move over to the existing floor and facility. That will be under repair for probably three or four months. And then once that's done, the new temporary floor will be used for other purposes. So it's an investment in our future there. So very complex project, and again, that's just to accept waste so we can move it elsewhere. We are working separately on a separate set of scales that you've approved several months ago. Currently, we only have one set, and if you've been on the Saturday, it can be a backup or any other day, really. So that second set of scales will allow for in-traffic and out-traffic. And so if the weather will cooperate, we will hopefully get that foundation poured very soon. The road going into the transfer station, we're essentially waiting until the scales are complete before we focus on that, just because of the, there might be a different orientation. So a lot of moving parts there, very complex, very expensive, and so we're trying to move as we can with the funds that we've been allowed. On that, transfer station, just quickly, those are funds that were provided under American Rescue Plan Act as well. So any questions about that project?
Now, we just ask the public, please be patient with us through the course of this construction. It'll be inconvenient for all of us, so please be patient if you can. Moving along then to new business. First, on new business would be, would be the JCPC.
Yes, sir. JCPC stands for Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. This is a group made up of appointees by this board and local agencies that, with state funding and county match or task with reducing judicial system involvement for our young people and those that have been involved in inappropriate activity, working with them so they don't do it again, essentially. So what you have in your packet is a set of recommendations on how that funding should be approved for the various agencies. And so if you so approve, this will be sent on to Raleigh for final approval.
Mr. Sher, make a motion to approve this, presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Next would be the budget update. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Just quickly, on the current year, you have your property tax collection report. You also have a sales tax report. And I'll mention on the FY '26 process, some wrapping up meetings with internal agencies now, and we need to talk about a date for the presentation of the recommended budget. I'm asking for Friday, May 30th, if that would work for either a morning or a midday for the board.
I'm available whenever.
That'll work.
What would be your preference timewise?
My consensus is midday.
Midday, okay?
Yes.
11:30 is good.
Very good. We'll get that advertised and noticed. The anticipation would be that the budget public hearing would be at the June regular session.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
Next would be administrative items. Do you have some?
Not too many. We do have reimbursement resolution for, talked about the transfer station, a wheel loader that we are in the process of hoping to purchase. And then the second one, we were contacted by, and I put in the news article, copy of it, Ms. Alyssa Hughes from the Barefoot Baby Foundation. Mr. Conley did a, he didn't do the story, I'll give him credit for it. He did. This organization is doing a program where they would like to build front porches onto homes for deserving folks, and they're asking for fee waivers for the building permit fees. It would be about $500 total. They are a nonprofit, and they are doing something good for the community, so they've asked for that fee waiver.
Mr. Sher, make a motion to approve the reimbursement resolution and the inspection fee waiver as presented.
Second. We have a motion, second. Discussion?
If we can, I have no problem with the motion, but we still need to register that with the county so that the county can keep up with the improvement.
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, next is board appointments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, you've got your regular memos in front of you that we'll continue to post. There's also a letter from Melissa Adams, the clerk of Superior Court. She's requesting to appoint a jury commission to begin July 1st, 2025, and they serve through June 30th, 2027. And Ms. Adams' letter requests that the current jury commissioner would like to continue, and that is Larry Lidle. He would like to be reappointed, if that pleases the board.
Is there any way we could get David Walker on that?
I make a motion to approve as the clerk is presented.
I'll second that.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you. Next is tax matters. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. These are our routine. These are our routine refunds and rebills and releases and sometimes discoveries, and you have just a couple of refunds this month, and then there are vehicle refunds as well.
Make motion to approve as presented.
Second. We have a motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Now it's citizen comments. Do we have any signed up citizen comments?
Yeah, I think we still got a few folks who want to speak.
That is all that's on the list.
Okay, next is commissioner staff reports. Anything on that?
I would like to say one thing. My motion tonight to do away with the 14-day euthanization period had nothing to do with the group that's here tonight. I would have made that decision whether you were here or not. I have never made a decision based on whether I could get a vote to be reelected or not, and I don't aim to start today. My decisions are based on doing the right thing for all the citizens of McDowell County. So I'm going to always try to do my best to do what's right by everyone. So just so you know, it had nothing to do with my decision. I don't bend, and I'm not saying that you did this. I do not bend to any group. I base my decisions based on my moral, religious beliefs, and what I think is best for my community, and that's where I stand.
That's all? Do I hear a motion? We adjourn. Second? All in favor? We are adjourned.